And welcome to the afternoon session of the Portland City Council for March 11th. Would you please call the roll?
Fritz.
Here.
Fish.
Here.
Saltzman, Novick, Hales.
Here, and Commissioner Novick is away. We expect Commissioner Saltzman to join us shortly. So, welcome everyone. We have one item on the calendar this afternoon. Would you please read that, Carla?
Item 266, transmit report on a potential citywide policy for removing barriers to employment for individuals with criminal histories.
Thank you. Well, I'm very pleased to kick off this discussion this afternoon and to welcome folks here who want to talk about this subject and about this important idea. I think this is one of these times when we, as a community, come together and do the right thing, and we do it in consultation with everyone involved. There are advocates here that we'll hear from today. There are business people who have figured out how to bring new people into their workforce who've come out of the criminal justice system. I think we're going to learn a lot this afternoon, and we're going to move forward on something where this community, once again, does the right thing. The city of Portland has already adopted policy for ban, which we call banning the box. We'll hear a little bit more about why we can't quite use that phrase to describe what we do here in Oregon. But we've already banned the box for city employment, and Multnomah County has done the same. Our human resources director reports that that's a great success, and we want that success to spread. It's our intention to have first our city attorney, who's worked on this idea, come up and make a presentation, then to be followed by some invited testimony from a number of people who are here today, and then have public testimony after that. We want everyone, obviously, to try to be as succinct as possible because we have a lot of people lined up. So I won't make any longer speech than that to kick this off, other than, again, to say thank you for caring and for being here today about an area where we can do the right thing for our friends and neighbors. And invite Judy Prosper from the city attorney's office up to make a presentation to get us started. Welcome, Judy.
You gave me a promotion. The city attorney is actually Tracy Reeve. I'm a deputy city attorney.
No, I knew you were deputy. We use that term of art. We didn't, no, we didn't promote you yet, but Tracy's doing a great job.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, welcome.
So, again, I'm Deputy City Attorney Judy Prosper. It's always my privilege to be before you, especially today, to discuss a very important policy initiative to eliminate barriers to employment for people with criminal histories. So many Americans have had contact with the law, either by being stopped or arrested by police, prosecuted in courts, and convicted of varying degrees of offenses. The purpose of this proposal, to amend the Portland city code that I will outline, will be to remove barriers to employment so that people with criminal histories may provide for themselves and their families, to reduce the disparate impacts on people of color that result from the use of criminal history information in hiring and employment decisions, and to assist with the reintroduction of formerly incarcerated persons into community life and to reduce the recidivism rate. Even those who do not spend any time in prison or jail can be adversely affected by employment practices that exclude candidates with criminal histories. The policy proposal I will lay out would create a fairer employment process to evaluate these candidates. Full-time employment is the best predictor for reducing the chance that a person with a criminal history will reoffend. Questions about past criminal history can be a deterrent for applicants and can be used too easily by employers to screen out people before their other qualifications for a given position are fully considered. Blanket exclusions also do not take into account any rehabilitation. The city of Portland, as you mentioned, and Multnomah County have already implemented internal policies for delaying inquiries into a person's criminal history until the conditional offer stage. There are exceptions, of course, for law enforcement-related positions, positions that involve vulnerable populations and where otherwise required by state, federal, local laws or policies. One hundred and eight cities and counties in over thirty states also have policies that delay a review of a person's criminal history. The National Employment Law Project has been at the forefront of advocating for what are colloquially known as ban the box initiatives. And as soon as I figure out how to turn the page, here it is. The box refers to the question often asked on employment applications. Have you ever been arrested or convicted of a crime? Over the last few months, I have reviewed ordinances and laws passed by other municipalities and states. Portland would be at the forefront of this growing trend to require that inquiries into a person's criminal history be delayed until later in the employment process. Nine cities, including San Francisco and Seattle, have been pioneers in instituting this policy in their private sectors. Two other cities, Newark, New Jersey, and Chicago, Illinois, later had their policies superseded by statewide laws. Six states and Washington, D.C., have instituted policies to delay criminal background inquiries. Two counties in Maryland have done the same. Most jurisdictions impose an outright prohibition on having such a question on an employment application, be it in paper form or online. Oregon's expansive free speech clause, Article 1, Section 8, would arguably trump any effort to impose such a limitation on an employer's speech here in Portland. Instead, we have outlined a substantive process for delaying the consideration of a person's criminal history until after a conditional offer of employment has been extended. Portland has often been the leader in Oregon, extending protection to ban discrimination against vulnerable populations before other Oregon cities or the state legislature in Salem. This council enacted code prohibiting discrimination in employment and public accommodations on the basis of a person's sexual orientation, gender identity, source of income, well before our state leaders. We continue to be ahead of the state in prohibiting discrimination based on familial status. We passed and successfully implemented the sick leave ordinance. Portland should be proud of its leadership role in advancing employment rights and continue its track record by considering this proposed policy initiative to remove barriers for people with criminal histories. Let us be clear, employers would never be prohibited from reviewing a person's criminal history, nor would they be required to hire a person with such a history. The proposed policy would merely delay inquiries so an employer and applicant could together flesh out a person's qualifications and experience first. So the following slides, there are a few of them so we could fit all the states in, will demonstrate some of the statistics that I just spoke of. I'll just flesh out, obviously, the first column are states and cities or counties. The second set of columns, private, vendor, or public, indicate in those respective places whether the delaying of consideration happens just on the public level, whether it relates to vendors, or whether it relates to public sector employers. So as we go through, we'll see places like San Francisco, as I mentioned, the state of Hawaii, the state of Illinois, Baltimore, Maryland, the two counties in Maryland, the entire state of Massachusetts. Also, I'll go across all of the columns. One of the important ones that I'll speak more to later is the last column, the EEOC criteria. You'll see that that's a very popular criteria. I'll flesh that out more a little bit later. So as I go through, we find places like Kansas, Michigan, it's state law in Minnesota, state law in New Jersey, North Carolina, Ohio has extended it for the public sector, we here in Oregon, as you mentioned, Pennsylvania, Rhode Island, Tennessee, places like Texas, This slide shows a summary, since we are a municipality, I decided to compare other municipalities. This chart shows the cities that have passed ordinances that extend to the private sector with their populations, the effective date of these ordinances. If you'll see, Philadelphia's effective date was in 2011. They are the longest, they hold the longest ordinance for this type of delaying of the review of criminal histories. Their process is a little bit different than some of the other processes. They only receive complaints, and there is a fine imposed of $2,000 per violation, and that $2,000 goes into the Philadelphia coffers. So, as you can see, between, these have been implemented as of 2013 and 2014, so there's not a lot of history or case law following those. So the next...
Can I ask a question off that slide?
Absolutely.
I hadn't seen this slide before. It's very, very helpful. So, the, we know that in the civil rights arena, and let's use Oregon as an example, there are some statutes that the federal law applies to employers of fifty or more employees. The Oregon counterpart, in some instances, is twenty-five or more employees. There are other statutes that are tailored to the unique jurisdiction. We have a requirement on earned sick leave at the city that has a magic number of six. So, you are proposing that this only apply to employers of six or more employees?
Yes, sir. We've ticked it to the sick leave ordinance. We don't want employers to have a whole bunch of different requirements that differ from ordinance to ordinance. So we did use that number just to relate it to another ordinance recently passed.
So let me dive in right there and say that was a real mistake, and we shouldn't have done that. It makes it very difficult to do, so I recommend that we look at everybody. It's, our experience with sick time was it's so difficult to figure out when six and five and other disincentives for people to then hire more employees. So I, my recommendation, and what we've been asking at the state level in their sick time ordinance, is to not have that difference.
Okay. One of the, one of the questions that comes up is, is the profile of the workplace so that we know who's impacted, and I think, I think the data point that will help guide our deliberation on that is, is just some updated numbers on the profile of our workforce, workplace. So how many companies do we have that are, you know, six or fewer? How many are the next size and the like? Do you, do you happen to know, though, in having done your research, why San Francisco settled at twenty or Philadelphia ten? Those are not numbers that are pegged anything that we're familiar with at the federal level. Were they just compromises worked out by the jurisdictions?
I think you've got the word.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You'll see on the chart that the fourth criteria, when in the process an employer is allowed to review criminal history, varies from the first interview or good faith interview all the way to conditional offer, and that's something I'll talk a little bit about a little later. You'll also notice that all the jurisdictions, except for Rochester and Portland, have an administrative agency that handles the first line of complaints. That's very important for talking about enforcement later on today. The penalties range from $50 to ninety days in jail as a misdemeanor.
And to clarify, that this box says when the process, when the employer is allowed to review, that means not only asking on an employment form, that means doing, they're not allowed to do a background check on everybody?
No, they are not allowed to do a background check on everyone. They are moving it to the conditional offer stage, which is what we are proposing, is after candidates have been fully evaluated on their merits, their experience, and qualifications, a conditional offer would be extended, and the condition would be you need to pass a criminal background check. And again, I'll flesh out some of the other details later. There could be other criteria, like you have to pass a typing test and prove that you can type the sixty words a minute you said you did on, or some other kind of test. But it's at that stage after the employer is satisfied with the candidate and really wants to hire them. The jurisdictions are split about half and half, and we're talking about eight, as to whether a private right of action exists. But to be noted is that the jurisdictions without a private right of action have robust administrative procedures. And I put the titles of the ordinances so we could, just to make it interesting, actually. So I'm going to go through and highlight the policy being proposed now by the city. The city attorney's office and the mayor's office have reviewed these statutes and ordinances, and we are proposing today, and I'm sure there'll be much discussion on the various pieces of it, a process, and here it is. So, when it comes to advertising and applications, employers would be encouraged to remove the box on their employment applications, whether they be in paper form or online. While this proposed policy would not impose a ban on the question of whether a person has a criminal history, in assessing whether an employer violated the policy, the presence of the box could be evidence that criminal history was improperly considered.
And again, the reason that you're suggesting that we take that approach is that the Oregon Constitution's free speech provision probably does not allow an outright ban as a mandate, right?
Exactly, and the ban itself does not necessarily lead to more hiring. You can remove it from your application and then ask them when they drop the application off, or early in the interview process. So removing the box from the piece of paper or on an online questionnaire may not actually achieve such a great result. Our proposal is that the employer could only consider the criminal history of a person after making a conditional offer of employment. And as Commissioner Fritz asked, and I mentioned earlier, the conditional offer means that you have the job, but you'll have to, now as I do a, an assessment of your criminal history, that it's going to be contingent on that assessment. And it may be other, there may be other contingencies as well, as I put here, a drug test or some kind of skills test.
So could you tell me how criminal backgrounds are checked? Are there companies, like rental checks?
Yeah, it's a very good question because I believe it's scattered. It used to be that you could only get someone's criminal background either from the FBI or from a state or local law enforcement agency. But there's a website called zaba search dot com. I'm not sure, I'm digressing a little bit, if you know, but what it does is it calls public records from all over and puts them online. And so companies have decided that it's profitable to cull criminal records, which are public records, and create databases so that if you pay them, you can get a criminal record check. The unfortunate thing, and I'm sure other people who are much more versed in this will tell you after I, my presentation, is that they tend to be fraught with mistakes. Arrests are on there, things that were expunged might be on there. Again, this is not something that I'm expert in, but I do know anecdotally that they tend to be fraught with errors.
Can I ask you a practical question? Someone who has been incarcerated for a period of time may very well have a gap on their resume. So what's the interplay between the resume and the review of a resume by an employer? And secondly, is it, is it typical that an employer checks references before or after a conditional offer is made?
I'm going to be careful not to say I know what typically happens. I'm not an employer, and I know there'll be employers here who can speak maybe a little bit better, and some advocates who will speak more clearly than I can on the interface. I agree that that is an issue, and those are the kinds of things that will need to be fleshed out in the education piece that we're offering as part of the proposal because, and I think advocates for people who are formerly incarcerated will have to work with crafting resumes and talking about different ways to put your best foot forward without highlighting the gaps in your employment.
And I think one of the things we'd be interested in is, is how other cities have crafted administrative rules to deal with that. So for example, one of the things that we often highlight in job interviews, let's say someone has had ten jobs in five years, and they're in a job every six months. I mean, that, that might prompt a question about, gosh, you've, you've had a lot of different employment things. Why? Right? Well, I kept taking the wrong job, or, you know, or I forgot to show up for work, or whatever. But you'd ask that question. Here, you may very well have on a resume a gap that someone would naturally ask, and how do you, how do you deal with that? That's a big question.
Again, I think that that's a question that we'll, we could sort of flesh out a little bit later, and where advocates and employers can talk about ways, when we do an education piece and some training on how this is going to go about, go forward. And to answer your second question about when in the process, I think that when there's a box on the application, sometimes that's the point in the process because that application is never considered if the box is checked.
Right, right, thank you.
So, I'm not sure I understand about checking references. Does that have to wait until a conditional offer, or can that occur at the first step?
Well, references...
Or the second step, or whatever.
References can be checked. An inquiry into whether or not the candidate has a criminal background would not be allowed.
So if I don't do a criminal background, check out the references, and the references are bad, I don't have to, I have no further obligation?
You would have no further obligation. The point of putting it at the conditional offer stage is that all of those things are yes. You've had a meeting of the minds with this candidate. They have the qualifications. You like their personality. You think that they're going to fit in well in the office. It's the last step, or one of the last steps of the process, and not one of the first steps, or one of the eliminating factors right off the bat. Does that answer your question?
So references can be an eliminating factor?
References can absolutely be an eliminating factor. If you called my old boss and they said, you know, no, she's not a good candidate, there'd be no reason to get to a conditional offer. You wouldn't, you would never get to that stage.
Here's an example of how it works in the civil rights context. Someone says, "I didn't get the job because the employer wouldn't hire me because I was gay, because I was African-American, because I was a woman with children, because I was over, over forty years old," whatever the category. The employer then has to have a neutral, nondiscriminatory reason for the action taken. Lawyer says, you know, "I had a requirement that you lift a hundred pounds on the job. You couldn't do that. I, you know, required X or Y, or checked your references and they weren't so good." But the employer's burden is to show that that impermissible factor was not driving the decision-making. And that's what I understand you're trying to structure here.
Exactly.
A way of making sure that that factor does not automatically disqualify someone. It doesn't preclude someone from saying, "There's other reasons why you're not a good fit for the job." But we're trying to eliminate the front door being closed on someone to even get to the point about whether they're qualified.
Said better than I could have.
No, you said it right. I'm just restating it.
Thank you, sir. So we've reached this individualized assessment criteria. What would happen now after the conditional offer was extended, an employer could now inquire into a person's criminal history. They could simply ask them, "Do you have a criminal history?" Or they could obtain a criminal history report. An employer would then be required to make an individualized assessment to determine whether a specific offense has a direct relationship to the person's ability to perform the duties and responsibilities of the job they are seeking. So conviction matched up with what the duties of the job are. This individualized assessment analysis comes from the EEOC's paper that recommends, it was, it's a 2012 guidance relating to the disparate impact of the use of criminal histories of protected, unprotected classes that an employer can utilize.
Let me what EEOC stands for.
Sorry, Equal Employment Opportunity Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the EEOC recommended a, some guidelines to use when cases of use of employment history came up and there was a disparate impact on a particular protected class. And the factors in the seminal case green are the nature and gravity of the offense, the time that has passed since the offense occurred, the conduct or the completion of the sentence, and the nature of the job held or sought. So that links into the individualized assessment that I spoke of a moment ago. So what kinds of things should not be considered by the employer? Again, these are the common factors among the ordinances that have been passed around the country. And arrests not leading to a conviction, except where a crime is unresolved or where charges are pending against someone, if they haven't yet gone to trial for the charge that they were arrested for. Convictions that have been judicially voided or expunged, and charges that have been resolved through the completion of a diversion or deferral of judgment program. I just want to say a little bit about the judicially voided or expunged. A lot of statutes talk about juvenile offenses, and the reason we didn't put that in here is because in Oregon, unlike some other jurisdictions, New York, for example, which I'm familiar with, juvenile offenses are sealed. If you committed a crime and it was adjudicated in family court, no one's ever going to see that record. It shouldn't show up on a criminal background check. In Oregon, you have to take active steps to expunge your record. So if you committed an offense as a minor, after five years of a clear record, you apply for expungement. So the reason you don't see juvenile offenses on there is because we'd have no way of removing them from the record unless someone actively expunged it. And that may be a question that others later will talk a little bit more about.
And what's the reason for allowing in...
And what's the reason for allowing in when charges are still pending, given that we have an innocent until proven guilty ethic? Why allow discrimination based on something which may or may not turn out to be true?
Yeah, that's a good question, and I think that that is another one of these compromises because most employers, I think, and again, I don't want to speak for employers, they'll speak for themselves shortly, want a quick turnaround. And maybe there's sort of this unknown question as to whether the person will be convicted. Will they be able to continue the job? Are they going to be incarcerated? That kind of iffy question is put in as one of these exceptions to give the employer some confidence that the person that they're hiring is going to be available to do the job long-term. Exceptions. So the proposed policy would not apply where a federal, state, or local law regulation requires or authorizes the consideration of a person's criminal history. Such situations will include employment of law enforcement or people working in the criminal justice system. Private security employment, where a license is required by the Oregon Department of Safety Standards and Training. Employees who would have direct access to or provide services for children, the elderly, persons with disabilities, persons with mental illness, or individuals with alcohol or drug dependence or substance abuse disorders. Employees required to be licensed, registered, certified, or otherwise authorized to practice a profession or trade in this state, and individuals applying for licensure, registration, certification, or authorization to practice such a profession or trade in this state. And lastly, for now, positions designated by the employer as part of a federal, state, or local government program designed to encourage the employment of those with criminal histories.
Is this an exemplist or are these the only-
They're typical.
These are the typical, they come in all shapes and sizes. I pulled these from existing state law that has prohibitions on its funding of such service providers. So for example, a nursing home that receives state funding would need to be accepted because they have actually a matrix, a list that was compiled by the Department of Human Services with actual offenses. And so a facility could not avail itself of state funding if they didn't follow those guidelines. Pardon me. So this, each of them are individualized to their state. I put this in sort of Oregonese so that it will be, we could look to something as guidance and not sort of make up categories. So we're proposing a process if after a conditional offer is extended, an individualized assessment of job relatedness is made, and an employer decides, I'm not going to hire this person, or I'm not going to promote this person, I'm not going to transfer them to a different department, or I'm going to discharge this person after finding out about this criminal history. So if all of that is the case, here's what would have to happen. The person would need to be informed of the adverse employment decision. And the portions of the criminal history would need to be outlined, and outline is the wrong word, would sort of need to be pointed out. And how I describe that as, if you have a written criminal history, you take a highlighter or you circle or you put a check mark next to the convictions that influence the decision, the adverse employment decision. The person would need to get a copy of the criminal history report. As I mentioned earlier, a lot of times they have errors, so it would be good for them to see it and be able to say, yes, this is true or this isn't true. A written notice of rights with a timeline for an opportunity to request reconsideration. I don't want to go back to the other slide because I may not be able to get back here. But there are various deadlines. They go from two days to 14 days. We thought two days was reasonable. Folks talked about too much time between offer, reconsideration would not be good for either the job seeker or the employer. So we put in two days to request reconsideration.
Two days from what?
Two days from receiving an adverse employment decision, a copy of the criminal history, and the, an indication somehow of what items in the criminal history caused the employer to make the adverse employment decision.
And is that two days by certified mail with receipt requested?
Good question.
That is a very good question.
Otherwise, you know, the mail is not necessarily that reliable, or somebody might be out of town for the weekend, in which case you're out of luck.
Normally-
Two days seems a lot, a very short time.
Normally, we'd have, I think we'd have to consider actual notice and then figure out the timeline and then different options. I mean, actual notice is handing something to someone, having them acknowledge receipt. That's the best. The next is the presumption of delivery of a letter or certified mail and getting a receipt. That's probably the least efficient for a lot of reasons. So I think Commissioner Fritz raised a very good question, and we should be looking at, to the extent possible, actual notice because that's the best. There's a receipt that says, I got this notice from you. And that avoids all the sort of complexity of figuring out where they actually got notice and running the clock.
I agree, and this is something that we can flesh out in the rules at the city, the administrative regulations that the city attorney would write up if such an ordinance were to pass. Those are the kinds of nuanced details that we can work out.
But the next one on this list has got my attention because I'm trying to think what other areas of our civil rights laws in particular, an employer's required to give a notice of enforcement options. So what's the analogy, where did you find that and what's the analogous requirement that you can think of? And if you can't think of it now, it's perhaps at some point we could come back to it. But, you know, employers are required to do reasonable accommodation analysis. They're required to do many things. I'd be interested in knowing currently, when does an employer have to give someone a notice that says, and if you disagree with me, here are all your legal rights?
Well, and I just noticed this for sure.
Well, no, there's some of that elsewhere in employment law.
I'm talking about the employment law.
Yeah, people look like they can answer that question too. So that's, I'm writing these down. That's a good one, so.
I'm writing them down too. So reconsideration. If the person requests reconsideration in whatever we decide is a timely manner based on your comments, the employer would then have two business days to reconsider the adverse employment decision. And they would again conduct an individualized assessment of relevant factors that could be offered by the person. And this isn't an exhaustive list, but these are the kinds of things that other jurisdictions have put as rehabilitative or mitigating factors. So the facts and circumstances surrounding the incident, the number of offenses, the age of the person at the time of the conviction or release from prison, that the person performed the same type of work post-conviction with the same or different employer with no known incidents of criminal conduct, the length and consistency of employment history before and after the offense or conduct, the person's participation in rehab efforts such as education, training, or substance abuse treatment, employment or character references, and any information regarding the person's fitness for a particular position, and whether the person is bonded under federal, state, or local bonding program. And unless the employer reaches a different decision after reconsideration, the adverse employment decision would become final for business days after the initial notice. And again, we'll keep in mind that notice requirement and how many days lapse between the request for reconsideration and the final decision. Enforcement, I'm sorry.
Can I raise a little red flag here?
Absolutely.
I think we have to think about some safe harbor provision so that these cases don't get litigated on the question of the timeline instead or on the substance. And I think there has to be some, there has to be some safe harbor around reasonable compliance with these rules. Otherwise, what you're going to have is a game of gotcha about whether the two days, the three days, the four days, the notice and everything else. So let's, and hopefully we'll have someone later lay that out. But I would want to at least consider a safe harbor provision that, so we're not just getting hung up on these deadlines. These deadlines are designed to bring this process to a prompt conclusion, to be respectful of the both parties' interests. But I don't think we want to have that be the primary issue in dispute going forward. So let's, we'll come back to that.
Definitely, and I totally agree. And that sort of brings us to this enforcement. And again, that timing, remember, we're talking about only after a conditional offer. So we're not talking about the universe of people who applied for the job. We're not talking about the universe of people who were interviewed, but specific people. And yes, that timing issue does have to be addressed. So on to suggested enforcement. We have two outlined. There could be action by the city attorney who already has the authority to bring code violations. So if the city attorney determined that a violation of the policy occurred, she could initiate a code violation proceeding after giving the employer notice of and an opportunity to explain the allegations. Again, we don't want it to be a gotcha, we're giving you a summons. We envision some kind of back and forth, like a letter outlining the allegations, some time for a response before a code violation proceeding would be initiated.
So let me ask you on this one, because this one got my attention because it's not typically what the city attorney does in this arena. And yet we do have an agency that typically does these kinds of things, which is the Bureau of Labor and Industries. Was there some consideration to simply contracting administratively with Bowley to handle the administrative component of this rather than essentially creating an enforcement unit within the city attorney's office to duplicate what they do routinely?
Well, historically, the city attorney has not exercised its general law enforcement authority, unlike other cities of our size and offices that actually prosecute criminal offenses. There is currently no law enforcement capacity within the city attorney's office. This is something that would have to be fleshed out. In terms of Bowley, Bowley is a state entity.
Right.
You know, familiar with the state laws. As the city of Portland passes civil rights laws, having the opportunity to litigate those laws here in the city, have an administrative process that could be quick and efficient to adjudicate those is something that could be beneficial. Again, this is a proposal, and in it, we outline sort of a possible way to go about-
So since you've, the mayor's invited us to ask the questions. We're having a forum to ask questions, not to debate, but to sort of put them out there and see if they stick. Let me make, let me just express the concern. I have tremendous confidence in the city attorney and in her ability to administer anything we set up. And I'm sure she would come with a specific request, it's a budget request, a staffing request. She would set up the administrative machinery necessary to do this because I'm guessing, you know, in the first couple of years, we could see a lot of action. The question I have is, since there are people already highly trained to investigate and hear at the administrative level these kinds of things at the state Bureau of Labor and Industries, why not consider contracting so that they would enforce this particular statute on behalf of the city and then test drive that relationship? I'm just throwing it out as an idea.
My understanding is we already contract with Bowley-
Right.
-to do the sick leave ordinances, and they are also handling our civil rights ordinances if someone brings a claim under there.
And they will be handling in due course some additional action around fair housing. So there is, and I'm guessing some other city, there's some other jurisdiction that has done something similar. I'm just raising it as an issue.
And you mentioned the term contracting. It costs the city money to ask Bowley to adjudicate those cases.
Correct.
They don't just do them. So part of it-
And one of the questions would be, is that, is it a better, is it a better or not as good remedy and process? That's a question. And then two is, is it more cost-effective to have them do it or to create a parallel administrative structure at the city attorney's office? I don't know the answer to that.
That's worth fleshing out. Good, good point. You didn't talk about private right of action.
Did I not? I'm sorry. I just skipped right. Thank you, sir. So the other enforcement mechanism we envision is a private right of action under Oregon Revised Statute 659A, point 885, which is a civil action, a civil civil rights action in a court of competent jurisdiction.
So that one got my attention too because I've sued a lot of people in another life under that statute. And so is your, you're just laying this out as a concept, right? Because it's currently a seven-page statute that has carefully tailored remedies and procedures according to the kind of claim. So you get jury trials with some, not others. You get punitive damages with some, not others. Compensatory damages, you get caps on damages for some claims, not caps on damages for others, and on and on and on. I take it what you're just saying is, this would be the statute where we would look to craft the remedy, but right now, we'd have to, we'd have to decide what is this most like in terms of state law? Because there's seven pages of tailored remedies depending on the claim. Am I right on that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Wait a second. I'm a little confused. So are you saying that statute is what becomes the basis for a private right of action? Or you're saying we would create a private right of action that would be modeled after that statute?
We would create a private right of action as happened with the, and tell me if I'm saying the case wrong, the BSOS case, where sexual orientation was the class of person at issue. And that case has been litigated, and the city of Portland passed a statute extending that protection, and the case was able to be brought under 659A.
In a, in a-
In a circuit, in a Multnomah County Circuit Court.
So describe for me, just in ordinary English, what a private right of action would look like to somebody that receives an adverse determination? What would the, what would the attorney writing the demand letter to the employer say in English, not legalese?
You got me on the fly, so here we go.
Yeah.
So I, so they would have received a conditional offer of employment, and the argument would be that the individualized assessment was not reasonable, that their offense was not reasonably related to the job description. So the case I like to use, it's very simple, a former bank robber recently released from prison who applies for a bank teller job. The employer, the bank, could reasonably say, I've done an individualized assessment and I'm not offering you this job. You would never get to the, I'm sorry, the conditional offer would be revoked. So it's what I mentioned earlier, and I'm going to dare, actually. Whoops. See, I knew I shouldn't dare to do anything because-
Carla can help you.
Turn it off.
Carla will help you.
Now you've done it.
I know. Thank you, Carla. The little thing. See, this is what happens when you give me technology.
So just sticking with your example, so if the potential employee responded, well, I robbed that bank when I was 17.
And-
And now I'm 40. Is that a basis to file a private action?
Well, I think it would be another-
I guess prevail on private action.
Let me try to create an opposite scenario. So that would be a reasonable decision by that employer, not subject to a private right of action because the previous conviction was reasonably related to the likely risk of that employee being employed there, right?
Not, not quite, mayor.
Okay, well, stick with me because I'm going to try to paint the opposite picture.
You can't, I know, but just to be clear, whether you think it's reasonable or not, the private right of action is just the door to the courthouse.
Right, right.
Anybody can file a claim.
Still have the right of action.
They can file a claim-
Right.
-saying anything they want.
You would not win, but you may not win.
Right. But you'd have to establish that you're a protected party, that is, someone covered by the law.
Right.
You'd have to establish that you were given a conditional offer. You have to prove that.
Right.
You have to prove, you have to then allege that it was then discovered or disclosed that you had a prior criminal conviction.
Right.
And that the employer did not exercise a reasonable, was not reasonable in saying that that disqualified me from the job when they withdrew the offer, and that that constitutes a violation of the law and I'm entitled to damages. And what we haven't figured out, if we do have a private right of action, is what kind of damages, jury trial, attorney fee, what do you get? But that would be the prime facia case.
Right.
If you were, if you were the bank robber and you were only 17, you could sue, but you may not prevail in the courts.
You bring up a really good point, Commissioner Saltzman, and that is the nature-time-nature test, which is part of that individualized assessment. The nature and gravity of the offense, so the robbery, and I'm sorry if the example is a poor one, but the robbery, but having occurred 25 years before would bring you to the second criteria, which is the time that has elapsed since the offense took place. Now, remember that after the rescinding of the conditional offer, there's- Now, remember that after the rescinding of the conditional offer, there's that opportunity for mitigating circumstances and evidence of rehabilitation. So, that would be a mitigating circumstance. You know, "I've lived a law-abiding life at seventeen. I made this error, and I've lived a law-abiding life. Now, I'm forty-five years old." So, those would be the kinds of questions that would decide whether the decision was reasonable.
And currently, if, if you've received an offer and you request a reasonable accommodation because you have a disability, the employer also has to go through a reasonable process to determine whether you get that accommodation, and that can be tested in court. So, this, this, the legal question would be a judge deciding whether the time limits have been followed, you qualify as a plaintiff, the law applies to you, and, and you've alleged that it's not reasonable, and there's some basis for that. And that potentially could then go forward. But that's, that's a lot of burden to get to that point.
Which is why the first option was presented. And as I said, in the lot, the option of the city attorney or another administrative process, in a lot of the jurisdictions that have an administrative process be the last step or the, as far as you can go on your claim, they have robust administrative agencies that are adjudicating these cases, investigating and adjudicating them. So, if, as you said, a place like Bowley could be contracted and that could be the final level of adjudication, that's an option.
Well, it's going to be a better option for most people, because most, most people have trouble finding an employment lawyer to take a case like this. It's a case that is typically taken on a contingent fee basis, because most people don't have the attorney fee. So, if, if you don't have an administrative process that's relatively easy, and by the way, the employer sometimes benefits from an administrative process, because you get a quicker outcome, and it's, and there's a mediation.
They don't have to pay lawyers.
Huh?
And they don't necessarily have longer.
Yeah, and there's an early mediation. There's a chance to kind of get it right before, you know, you're stuck in a two-year piece of litigation, and so.
I think you're talking about the access-to-justice piece, where people who are not typical plaintiffs could still bring a case somewhere and have it investigated and adjudicated without having to seek out a lawyer who's going to make this cost-benefit analysis.
Again, I'm not saying anything out of line here. Most people with claims like this have trouble finding a lawyer who will take the case. Let's just be clear. There's, there's not a lot of people who do these kinds of cases, and they're very careful in their screening. That's why Bowley plays, that's why Bowley and the EEOC are so important to people seeking to have their claims resolved.
Okay, so, let's, let's finish your last slide. We're sorry we got onto a good discussion.
It's okay.
I'm not sorry, but we got onto a good discussion there.
So, a public education and outreach piece. This will not be successful if there is not a strong public education piece developed by the city, implementing outreach to both employers and people with criminal histories to explain exactly what it is such a policy would do, what rights each party would have. So, I'm going to end there and just say that if this is something that the city would pursue, and I hope it is, that piece would be essential to the success of such a policy. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you.
But just going back to the beginning of the presentation, where you said that we couldn't ban the box, what's to stop a potential employer putting in their ad, foreigners need not apply, or felons need not apply? Is that prohibited in other parts of statutes?
In other jurisdictions, it is. Here in Oregon, and I am not an expert on Article One, Section Eight, others here are, but employers, we could not prohibit, we believe, employers from having that question. But in determining whether a violation took place later in the process, the fact of the box or the question could be used later.
No, I understand that part. What I'm concerned about is, will employers now go even further upstream and put something in their announcement about, "Don't even apply if you're, have a conviction"?
Only if they have an enormous amount of money in reserve for legal fees.
Because that would be.
Because what they have done is created a blanket class of plaintiffs. Anybody with a criminal background who applies to that employer is going to say, "Of course, I never got a fair shake," because they're advertising. That, that would be the gold standard for a plaintiff's lawyer, to have such a thing. If someone chooses to do that, it, it would make the cases a lot easier for the plaintiff.
Thank you.
You can't prevent them from doing it, I guess, under the First Amendment, but it would be, the plaintiff's bar would be delighted if employers did that.
If someone exercised their right to be that stupid.
In fact, they'd hire someone just to collect, collect those kinds of announcements.
I figured. So, thank you for clarifying that, and that would be part of the public outreach that you got to at the end there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And also, the EEOC's guidelines are based on disparate impact. So, such a blanket, thank you, such a blanket policy by an employer would probably, as Commissioner Fish states, invite a disparate impact claims from all kinds of protected classes.
Judy, thank you. A couple more questions, and then we'll call her back when we.
Does this apply to full and part-time employment, or simply full-time?
It would apply to all employment. We would probably fashion something that would apply to sort of all people in all positions.
So, if you're hiring summer youth and things like that, we'd have to go through
Yes, with the exceptions outlined on that exception slide. And if it's a policy, if it's a policy, one of those exceptions was a position designated by the employer as part of a program to encourage employment of those with criminal histories. That is one of the exceptions. So, if you had a youth employment program with that bend that was trying to rehabilitate youth, then it would fall under an exception.
Great.
So, and maybe this isn't the question for you to answer, but I guess, you know, I can see this maybe working in a, a large company, but I have a hard time grasping how this is going to work in a sole proprietorship corner market. I mean, that's, I don't think you need to answer that question. I'll just.
Thank you.
I'm having a hard time seeing this working outside of sort of typical corporate America.
I think some of the people we hear from today are small businesses that already do this, so I think we could, we could hear how they have made it work.
Well, we also have a chart that says every jurisdiction has taken this up, has debated that very issue.
Right, set a threshold somewhere.
And in San Francisco, which is a pretty liberal place, they've said it's, you have to have twenty employees. So, that, that would, that would be well above the sort of small neighborhood, the typical neighborhood, small business in Portland has five or fewer employees. So, that's just, just as a way of comparison.
Judy, thank you. We'll, we'll have you back either at the end of this or at our next phase, but thank you for great work. Appreciate it. So, we have some panels lined up, starting with some folks that actually place people now into employment that are coming out of the criminal justice system. I'll call a panel of one first, because of the number of chairs, and then some more people, but let me start with Holly Whittleton from Southeast Works. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Hales, and city commissioners, for the opportunity to speak this afternoon. I've been asked to speak to Southeast Works and our workforce development efforts with individuals with backgrounds and second-chance employers, as we call them, and the impact of employment on recidivism. We know that employment matters and that we want to endorse, ban the box or fair chance. For over eighteen years, Southeast Works has delivered workforce development and youth education and career development through our nonprofit, community-based development organization. In 2013, 14, we served over three thousand individuals with backgrounds, including adults and justice-involved youth ages sixteen to twenty-four. And our WorkSource Portland Metro Southeast Center serves the highest percentage of those who self-attested in the system to a background, and we have about seventeen percent of our population who are coming through the WorkSource Center self-atesting. We have really moved to pre-release work versus post-release work, and that pre-release work is including work on securing identification for employment, working with employers pre-release for an individual, and securing healthcare to ensure that they have a job, that they have housing, and that they have healthcare in place. We also work around ten programs for reentry through our integrated worksource development model with drug courts and the court diversion programs, and a multidisciplinary treatment and justice program for gang-involved youth in Rosewood. And these programs really work to empower individuals with backgrounds by teaching them through really relational case management, tailored workshops, and through one-to-one work with their case manager, how to explain their skills and their abilities, not their background. We need to get to that. We need to start talking about their skill and ability first. And so, we work with individuals to get them training through the WorkSource Centers, and that could be anything from forklift certification through HVAC training, and then working with those employers who have deemed themselves second-chance employers to get those positions, so that they're not constantly stuck in transitional or survival jobs. They're looking at some career track employment, which is really important. One of the integrated programs that's really been one of our most successful has been the Prisoner Reentry Employment Program. It's actually funded by the city of Portland and through WSI, Work Systems, Inc. And through a three-year career track model, which is highly relational with the case manager, the individual is placed in a job and case managed and worked with the employer on a constant basis to see if there's any issues that are happening with that particular customer who's been placed. In 2013, 14, we placed a hundred and two participants in that program, and of a hundred and two participants, sixty, seventy-six percent became employed with an average hourly wage of thirteen point seven one dollars, thirteen dollars and seventy-one cents, and we have a recidivism rate of one percent. If you look nationwide, recidivism rates are over sixty-seven percent in some of the states. So, we believe that it's highly relational model, the follow-up, the work with the employer, and the front end, which we do a lot of job carving on behalf of the customer to get the proper placement. We're not going to take somebody with a background, you know, as Judy has just explained, maybe that had robbery, putting them in a position that the employer's, you know, not interested in hiring them in. So, we really try to tailor-make the jobs to the individuals. We've also been very successful with a very large Department of Labor grant over a five-year window that we've tracked. We had eight hundred and nine participants, six hundred and thirty-one, or seventy-seven percent of those individuals were placed in employment, and only sixty-nine out of that six hundred and thirty-one recidivated, eleven percent. So, we're seeing that employment is the answer, along with housing and healthcare, but employment really does drive recidivism rates. We've worked for many, many years, for anyone that knows Southeast Works, in cultivating second-chance employers. We have a huge database of those individuals, and what we know is that it takes a lot of time, and it takes education and context for the business to embrace hiring those with backgrounds. It really does. And there's a lot of mythology with backgrounds, and employers are not, are not well-educated in relation to that. We have, not all employers are keen to, are keen to hire, and the box is used as a deterrent, really, you know, to hire individuals that we do put forward, but we do have businesses that do give individuals a second chance. And I think we're really honest with our employers, and we sell skill and ability, not character, and that's what we're clear about. And that, really building that relationship with the employer is absolutely critical from our end, so that there is a trust between the employer and Southeast Works that we're going to give them the best candidate possible for the job. I did get the chance to talk to a few employers before I came here today, and some of them are second-chance, and some of them quite large employers who do hire individuals, and they felt that you needed to get some of the best champions on this initiative, which were chambers of commerce, PHRMA, the Professional and Human Resources Management Association, and get employers to understand what ban the box or if the Fair Chance Initiative is really all about. There's a lot of misinformation out there already about it. When I was talking to employers about coming today, they were just like, "No, you know, don't, don't want to have that discussion about banning the box." So, I think there's a lot of work. We did a lot of work on the phone about this. And they asked about city and county outcomes. If this has been endorsed over a year ago with city and county, what are the outcomes, and what were the lessons learned? One of the largest employers wanted to know. And that they felt that an education campaign for employers, that they understand the benefits and that they really reduce the mythology and fear. And one employer asked me, you know, "What is the enforcement?" I heard Judy talk about that, because without enforcement, he called it a toothless tiger. And in closing, I just want to say that Southeast Works is a second-chance employer, and sixteen percent of my labor force have backgrounds. I've established baselines for hiring. We have a school on premises, and so, contractually, I have to look at that, but we want to give people a second chance. And we really believe that a charge and a criminal background is not a life sentence, and this is what happens when you're checking off boxes for either employment or housing. Applicants are put in the situation of being screened out before they're able to really describe what they have to give to that employer. They don't have the chance to say how long ago their, their, the criminal activity has been, or what they were charged or incarcerated with, what they've done since then. We have many that have come in and done a lot of community work. So, how do they get to explain that if they're screened out? And most of all, you know, what are their skills and abilities, and the ability to sit in front of someone and be able to discuss that. We also know that this checkbox, because of our work, really affects communities of color who are overrepresented in the justice system, and we need to think about that as we look at this. And we really encourage employers to ban the box, take a thoughtful look at this, establish a baseline for hiring, and assist those who want to work and be crime-free, and overall reduce recidivism, and really, you know, make that change in the community. So, I thank you today for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Thank you very much, Holly. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, we have some more folks that are in the, in the business of getting people hired. Patrick Gearing, Andrew McGuff, and Pat Daniels from Work Systems, Inc. and Constructing Hope. Would you come up? Two out of three, anyone? Come on in.
Three of three.
Pat Daniels. Yes.
Was unable to make it.
Hi, I'm Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. My name is Jacqueline Witt, and I'm here representing Constructing Hope.
Who's first?
Well, I guess I'll kick it off, because I'm the more generic spokesperson here. My name is Andrew McGough. I'm the executive director of Work Systems, Inc. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity to speak to you today, and council members the same. Part of our responsibility, as Holly just testified, is to oversee the region's workforce development system. We call that WorkSource Portland Metro locally. And in our five centers last year, we served a hundred and one thousand job seekers across the region. Nine percent of those job seekers were more than nine thousand people self-disclosed having a criminal background. Research shows that a good job is one of the best ways to prevent ex-offenders from committing new crimes. Unfortunately, finding a good job is one of the most difficult tasks for former offenders. Recent survey results suggest that between sixty and seventy-five percent of ex-offenders are jobless up to a year after release. Research conducted by the National Institute for Justice has shown that most employers are reluctant to hire applicants with criminal records. In a study conducted in New York City, for example, a criminal record reduced the likelihood of a callback or job offer by nearly fifty percent. In the same New York City study, employment prospects for applicants with criminal records improved when applicants had an opportunity to interact with the hiring manager. The study concluded that personal interaction between the applicant and the prospective employer was a key factor in successful hiring. While I know there will be some controversy surrounding the specifics, and I think Commissioner Fish pointed that out quite well today, I'm convinced we can find common ground and figure out ways to remove impediments for people with criminal backgrounds to reconnect with the labor market. Basic things we know are effective, like removing the question from the application and ensuring that people have an opportunity to interact face-to-face. These should be front and center with whatever policy or regulations emerge. As a local employer, I can speak from personal experience to the benefits of these kinds of practices. We have the option to do a criminal background check as a condition of employment. This does not happen until the offer stage, and it is at our discretion. We made an offer to a person where we discovered an extensive criminal record, including spending time in prison. However, through the interview process, we decided to give her a shot. She has turned out to be a great member of our team, and has, she has proven to be the right person for the job. Thanks for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Welcome.
Is this remaining time cumulative here for all three of us?
Yes, please. Go ahead.
I'll keep, I'll keep it short.
There's no time left.
Oh, I just.
You're fine.
Hi, my name is Jacqueline, and I just, I wanted to share a part of my story, because I think it's imperative that we ban the box to help individuals like myself be able to I think it's imperative that we ban the box to help individuals like myself be able to secure employment so we don't return back to the same behaviors that we had. And I have a lot of skills to present to an employer, and I've done a lot of programs in public service. And I have really began to understand the important things in life and how to go about establishing relationships. And I have had wonderful people teaching me in organizations such as Mercy Corps and Constructing Hope and Better People. And I'm currently employed at Red Lodge Transition Service, which is an agency that helped me. They helped me. I volunteered for them when I got out of prison, and they actually hired me for a part-time position. But had it not been for them, I wouldn't have an income, and I just want to ask that ban the box be instated so individuals like myself can raise ourselves up out of poverty and secure a decent income to be able to live and thrive instead of just survive. Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
I'm Patrick Gearing. I'm also from Work Systems, Inc. We manage the Economic Opportunity Program, which is a city program that serves about 700 low-income Portland residents who have barriers to employment. Of the people served in this program, about 300 or 40% are ex-offenders. Ex-offenders are served across the array of partners within the network. And as you've heard, there are special projects at Southeast Works and Constructing Hope that are focused on serving these population with employment services. We provide an array of specialized services through the WorkSource system. You've heard a little bit about those earlier from Holly that support the employment goals of people served in the Economic Opportunity Programs. These services include job clubs for ex-offenders, workshops to help people communicate with employers about their backgrounds, internships for people with limited work experience, and training in occupations that offer more opportunities and open doors for ex-offenders. 58% of the people who have criminal backgrounds served in this program enter employment during the course of their participation at an average wage of $13 an hour. We think that's good, but it could be a lot better if there were more open doors for this population. The approach of leading with strengths and giving job seekers a chance to communicate what they have to offer to an employer before they're screened out or need to talk about the checks against them is something that we support. I'd also add, for the many people we serve who have a 10 or more-year gap in their employment history, for them, the barrier is bigger than a box. They often need career coaching, job training, and help connecting to employers. That's why I'm also here to support the employment program services that you're hearing about today, and we believe this is also an important part of the solution.
Mayor, can I ask Andrew a question?
Yes, please. Questions?
Andrew, you may have already sort of touched on this, but you estimate that, but how many people might, in Multnomah County, might benefit from this change in the law?
Well, if it's 9%, 10% of the labor market, 15,000 people?
And what are the, from your experience, what are the kinds of jobs that people are competing? I know it's hard to generalize, but what are some of the kinds of jobs, categories of jobs, that people who are coming out of the criminal justice system are competing for?
Well, we hope they're middle-skill jobs that pay livable wages. So, we like to focus on careers in manufacturing, construction. There are certain industries that definitely are more favorable for people re-entering the labor market with criminal backgrounds. Healthcare, for example, is not an industry that we have a lot of success with, with ex-offenders.
You have had some with the trades?
Yes.
And we also know that there are some programs that the trades are running in facilities where people can get their, do some apprentice work, get their certification and be job ready.
Absolutely. Yes. So, there's a lot of that work going on. It's increasing. And, you know, the use of like certifications, industry-recognized certifications, and other sort of competency-based measures are really effective with these kinds of populations. So...
Thank you all.
Andrew, what, you said we haven't been particularly successful in the healthcare sector? Is there...
With ex-offenders.
Yeah, I mean, is there a reason?
Well, I think that a lot of the occupations within the healthcare system require relationships with patients and individuals and access to potentially drugs and just, the environment is a little bit more challenging, I think.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you all. Thanks very much.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks for coming. So, speaking of employers, let's call a panel of four of them. Jim Hauser from Hawthorne Auto, Bill Dickey from Morel, Inc., London Elliott from Family Story, and Judd Wrench from Bula Baba House. Come on up, please. Jim, I think you're on first, if you'd like to be...
Thank you.
Just swing that over to you. It will move.
There you go.
There you go.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Jim Hauser, and my wife and I own and operate Hawthorne Auto Clinic at 4307 Southeast Hawthorne Boulevard. We have for 32 years. I'm also co-chair of the Main Street Alliance of Oregon, a network of 2,500 Oregon small business owners working together to lift up the real voices of small business on public policy. 28 years ago, I hired an employee who was upfront about his criminal history. He recently, he just recently retired after three decades of one of our best employees. Having a criminal record doesn't mean being a bad employee. In my experience, people with criminal records are often model employees. They are frequently the most dedicated and conscientious. A lot of doors are shut to them, so when someone gives them an opportunity, they make the most of it. Postponing a criminal background check or asking candidate questions about arrest or conviction records unrelated to job duties until after a job offer has been made gives an employer the opportunity to appreciate that the best person for the job may in fact have a record. In fact, a company, in fact, company policies requiring early background investigations may not be in the best interest of either the applicant or the company. From my perspective, why would an employer want to short-circuit the hiring process and deny themselves the opportunity to hire the best person for the job? In the end, what's good for my community is good for my business. As a small business owner, I know that when people have opportunities to succeed, the local community and economy thrives, and in turn, my company thrives. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dickey, why don't you go next? Just swing that over to you there. There you are.
My name is Bill Dickey. I'm the co-owner of Morel, Inc. out in northeast Portland. We're a commercial printing company. I apologize, I left my talking points at home, so I'm going to have to do this off the cuff. But I think that this banning the box movement itself is just sort of ending a stereotype. I think that for our personal company's experience, we have about 12% of our workforce have criminal backgrounds. One that developed while they were on staff, one that the person came to us and said, "I need help getting a job. I've got this problem," and we hired them. In all cases, these employees have worked out to be great people and do a wonderful job, and we haven't had a negative result in the case of any of it. I, I think that the, listening to the ordinance, it got very confusing for me, because to me, all this does is just eliminates the, out of hand, eliminating an employee out of hand without having a chance to have a conversation with the employee first. If you and the employee, prospective employee, you know, have a chance to get to know one another, and the employee divulges this thing in his past, then you get to make the decision. But if you're just looking at a stack of applications and this box is checked, and you pass that without talking to the person first, it eliminates you from the opportunity to maybe develop a great relationship and have a great employee. So, I don't think it really changes anybody's hiring practices. It just gives you an opportunity to meet with a person that you might otherwise not get to talk to, who could be a great viable asset for your business. And I think that pretty much covers my testimony. I've covered my points in my iPad.
Thank you very much. Elliot?
My name is Judd Wrench. I own a business called Bula Baba House. We're a cafe in southeast Portland. I have an online store as well. It's our fourth year in business. Pretty quickly, we've gone to, we're projecting about a half a million in sales this year from my small business. I'm also a convicted felon, and I have two other misdemeanors as well on my record. I was, I was pretty lucky in the, when I had this idea for my business now, I had some good support financially and also just, you know, just some backing otherwise. But, but, but a lot of people with a background like mine, they don't have that same support. And if I didn't have the support that I do, that I did have, I mean, there's no way I would have been able to do what I'm doing now. I definitely would have a hard time finding any job, because I think, as he was saying, that, you know, having that box on an application that's on so many is just, I mean, people just automatically look at it like, well, this is no longer a viable employee. And I think my story's so applicable because obviously, I'm a viable employee. I, I think if I weren't, if I didn't own my own business, I'd be valuable to, to, to a lot of different employers. And I think, I think banning the box and, and, just, it's just really important to, to get past that and to decide if someone's a viable employee based on something else. Right now, I have six employees. I haven't done a background check on any of them. I just don't see it very, in my business, and I know it's different from business, but my business, I just don't see it very valuable. To know that, I think it's much more valuable sitting down and talking with someone and then talking to their other references, I think, I think makes a lot more sense. So, yeah, I mean, I, I support this, and I think, I think that I'm proof that a criminal background check is definitely something that shouldn't exclude you from, from a job offer in the first place.
Thanks very much. Appreciate you being here.
Listening.
Thanks for coming. Welcome. There's a little button on the bottom of that. There you go. Just push that button, and it'll turn it on. There you are.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
That's loud. Um, hi. Good afternoon, Mayor Hales and members of the Portland City Council. My name is London Elliott, and I am currently a senior at Jefferson High School and also an emerging leader with the Urban League of Portland's Social Justice and Civic Leadership Program. I urge you to support the Fair Chance for All Ban the Box Ordinance, because I believe it could help families like mine. I've seen firsthand the problem that people who have prior arrests or convictions have finding a job when they come back to wider society. I've seen my grandma struggle with finding a job that would help her support her family as a single mother. I've seen how stressful it is and how hard she has worked to put food on the table, to keep the water on and the lights running, to keep a roof over her and her five children's heads. Currently, my older brother is in jail, and we have to worry if he will ever be able to get a job because he did something stupid when he was 15 years old. Once he gets out, he would, he'll be expected to be a member of our society, which means getting a job. I have a cousin who is now an award-winning author, but wouldn't have this chance if no one gave him that chance. If they looked at his prior jail time instead of his abilities, he wouldn't be where he is today, and everybody reads author. Who knows what my brother could be when he gets out of jail? Without passing the Ban the Box Ordinance, he will be another person in our economy struggling for a job. Thank you for your time, and I really hope you pass the ordinance to give a fair chance to all people.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Well done. Thank you all. Any questions? Appreciate you being here. Thank you very much. So, our next panel are some folks that are also personally involved in this transition, getting people through that transition. Sonia Skvarla, Meg Warden, and Aidan Warden from A Social Ignition. Welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll start. Hello. Again, my name is Sonia Skvarla. I'm the founder and CEO of an organization called A Social Ignition. We teach entrepreneurship and business inside of our incarceration, and we coach members of our class through their transition and into the job force. We teach both at Columbia River Correctional Institution up on Columbia Way and in the Multnomah County Jail. I'm here today to talk to you about this particular issue because it's close to my heart, but not because I've ever been incarcerated, not because I've known anybody who's incarcerated, although now I know many. But before I started this work, I didn't. For me, it comes from a place of participation and economic accessibility. And the fact that without true economic accessibility for all people, we don't actually have a democracy. And in my opinion, the economic accessibility and everybody's ability to participate will actually help us solve all sorts of social problems due to the diverse, this is making me a little emotional. Thank you for bearing with me. The diverse voices, and although I have not been incarcerated, so I can't speak to the experience of someone who has. So, it is really important for me to hear their voice in all decision-making arenas, which is why I teach this work. Business is a key to any sort of positive change. It is a huge power source in the way that we conduct ourselves in this country. And providing men with an opportunity to speak the language of, to speak the language of business will help them move forward in that way. So, the other piece to our program, and it's not only teaching business, but every time we go into the prison, we bring business leaders with us, so that the ban the box is not an issue, because they're breaking down the stigmas and stereotypes and building relationships based on the language of business and not on any prior conviction. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Ms. Warden, welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Meg Warden. Thanks for letting me speak. I am the Director of Strategic Partnerships for A Social Ignition with Sonia. I also have a private health coaching business and speak all over the country and soon internationally to entrepreneurs. I am very open about my criminal history. I have a felony. I was served time in prison for selling drugs from 2003 to 2005. It has been, from the beginning of my release, incredibly important to me that I would be able to live in a place free of stigma, which has taken a lot of work, because that's not where we're living. It was really important to me that my son didn't have the stigma of my criminal activity that happened before he was born. And so, I've worked really, really hard on being able to tell this story in a way that engenders compassion and support rather than judgment and fear. Fortunately for me, I have some privileges financially and culturally and educationally that other people don't have, and I've been able to withstand the long process after prison it took to try to find a job, which never really happened. It was incredibly dehumanizing. It was incredibly discouraging. Every time I had to check that box without a face-to-face meeting, I never got a face-to-face meeting. When I did get a face-to-face meeting, I was put in a position, after having served my time, after having actually done everything I was supposed to do to pay for this crime, I was still paying for it. I was still being asked to prove myself as a person and as a human. And that's an incredibly hard thing to do with the privileges I had. So, I, I want to say I cannot even imagine what it's like to be in another position, but I've been fortunate enough, actually at this point, to have worked as a mentor and as a teacher to many people inside and outside of prison. And this is a population that is, in huge parts, incredibly hungry for opportunity. They are amazing workers. They are people who also in large part have done something with their available skillset and tools rather than nothing, and often, those available tools were not viable or legal. And I've watched them be, and myself included, be able to take... And I've watched them be, and myself included, be able to take new skillsets and new tools and new support systems and do amazing things with them. I'm absolutely in support of this, this ordinance because it effectively eliminates legal discrimination for a group of people that, when employed, when they're able to have the opportunity to participate in our economy, not only benefits us fiscally, but also gives us the opportunity to live in a society that is richer, more diverse, and more merciful. And this is frankly, this is a world I want to live in. And so this, this work is really important to me and it's a world I really want my son to live in. And I think that's about it.
Is this poised young man your son?
The guy to my right is here to hopefully pull your heartstrings a little. He's done a great job and it is my absolute, um, no, he, you don't have to say anything if you don't want to.
Looks like a very serious man.
Just his presence is here to pull your heartstrings. But it's really important to me that he gets to live in an environment that is free from stigma because there's, you know, I don't have the exact numbers, but it is a, it is very common that the children of people who have been incarcerated are incarcerated as well. And also, he doesn't, he doesn't deserve to grow up in a world where he has to live with the stigma of my mistakes and so...
Can I ask you just to-
Yeah.
-get some parental advice, parenting advice?
Please.
Because I think your son's about the age of my son and-
He's 12, almost 13.
Yeah, so my son is almost 12. And when we go to church or we go to special events, he, he refuses to wear a tie or a jacket. So do you have any-
Maybe Aiden has some advice for your son.
Would you like to answer that question, Aiden?
Um, oh wait.
Yeah, Aiden. We'd love to hear from you, Aiden, so-
Um, I don't really know. I just am fine with wearing a tie.
Hey, hey, it's like-
He's got great style.
Man, a few words, but very powerful words.
Did you want to say anything at all about this ordinance?
What's this whole experience of your mom being able to finally work been like for you? Is it, how?
I don't know. It's been hard to, a lot of stuff's happened. I don't really know how to explain it. I'm bad at speeches.
You're doing fine.
Doing all right. So, yeah.
Are you proud of your mom?
Mm-hmm, very. She's worked very hard to get where she is. So, um, I support the, uh, what do you, ordinance, whatever you call it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, that.
Well, thank you. We appreciate you being here.
Aiden, thank you for standing up for your mom and for all people who need help, a little bit of help like her. Like, thank you for being here. That was really helpful.
You're welcome.
Thank you all. Thanks very much.
Thanks.
We have some, some folks who are now in the process of seeking work that we want to hear from. Trenton Anderson and Mike DiEpprio. Trenton and Mike, are you here? Yes, they are. Good afternoon and welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Mr. Hales, for letting me come up here and speak to you today and, and a member of the board.
Just give us your name and say your piece.
I'm Trenton Anderson. I'm a convicted felon. I've just recently gotten released, probably about three days ago. Um, you know, there's, there's a lot of thoughts that go through my mind when it comes to going out looking for work. That, that box is one of them. I've did a, I've made some pretty poor choices in my life. Took me about three minutes to make choices that costed me three years of my life, which in those three years, I made a lot of choices that helped me re-channel my thoughts and my thinking and become a part of groups that helped me make the right choices, which is Phoenix Rising and A Social Ignitions. With that said, I was able to work with them in there, not only in there, but they were here for me to support me once I got out. I, I totally am against the whole check-in-the-box thing because the choices that I've made in the past should be left in the past. Now, whether it, you know, gives them the, the right to discriminate against me for the fact that, of what I committed in the past, I feel is, is, shouldn't be valid at that point in my application or even in my resume. Because, you know, I've, I've did a lot of work being in prison. I've, I've, I've gotten 23 certificates of completion. I've, I've spent three years correcting something, a choice that I made in a matter of three minutes. So with that said, I, you know, I, I think that there's a lot of things that need to be done here. And social stigma, to me, is, is the same thing as racism. I think they coincide because it helps somebody make a decision upon somebody, you know, for, for, you know, what the appearance of, what they look like is. And then, and I, I don't think that's right. I don't agree with it. So, yeah, I'm pretty much on the, on the, on the, the equal opportunity rights. You know, we're all Americans. We're all here to try to do the right thing for the right reasons because that's the right thing to do, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name's Michael DePiro. I want to thank you for having me. A lot of the things that Trent here said, I have, there's a lot of similarities to my story as well. I was just released in December after doing six years in prison. Before I was in prison, I had an extensive employment history with a couple of different employers. I had, I had a lot of sales jobs that I was involved in, a lot of sensitive customer information that I was used to handling. Now that I've gotten out of prison, it has been absolutely impossible to get back into the field that I was in because of the crime that I committed. I have had a dozen or so employers that have denied me immediately, once they found out that I had a felony. I'm in the process right now where I actually do have two conditional offers, one from a large company and one from a smaller company, but it's all pending upon, pending on my background. I've been absolutely upfront about what I've done. Even in the interview, there was a, there was a gap in my employment. When I wasn't involved in school while I was in prison, where they questioned me about it in the interview, and I was, you know, humbly spoke to them about it, and they said, "Well, we really like you. We'd like to offer you the job, but it's pending upon what our corporation says." It makes it very difficult, definitely very, very, very difficult having a felony. And, you know, for the, like I said, the dozen or so employers that I have applied with, for them just to deny me just because I have a felony, you know, I do believe that it is a form of discrimination because I'm more than qualified for the positions that I've applied for. I mean, the positions I've applied for, again, I'm more than qualified to do them, but just because I had to check that box, they denied me. So, you know, I have four children and they, they do live with me. And I have a, it makes it hard, you know? And luckily, I'm in a position where I have somebody in my family who owns a business that I'm able to work for at this time, not enough to support my children the way that they need to be supported though. So, I spoke my piece.
Thank you. Thank you both. I heard, I heard some great presentations from people involved in this program, including you. And seeing the skills that these programs impart to people or let them polish and then have them get out in the workforce and not be able to put them to use is wrong. So we, we wish you well.
Yeah. Thank you for asking.
Thank you for being here. Thanks for coming. Okay. Our next panel is from a number of organizations in the community that have worked on this issue, from the NAACP, James Posey, from Apano, Joseph Santos Lyons, from NIA, Carrie Walters, and from Hacienda, Victor Merced. Come on up. There's a fourth chair if you're all here, so.
Mayor and Commissioners, somehow my name got put on for the NAACP and actually, actually, we have Joanne-
Oh, she's here?
She's here. And I don't think, is she here? She can talk about-
James, she puts you on. It's the only way she can get you to pay the dues, you promised.
All right. I would like to come up and talk about my small business.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll do that too. So, thank you. All right. Joanne, would you like to go ahead?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Joanne Hardisty. And I am not speaking on behalf of the NAACP because of the time period that's required for a membership organization to take a vote. But as a longtime community member who's worked on criminal justice issues, I am here in total support of the, of, of the measure that you're voting on today. I want to remind the audience that we Oregonians went from a rehabilitation to a punitive state in our constitution as it relates to people being incarcerated. When we passed ballot measure 11, we decided that 15-year-olds should go to adult jails. When we decided that five years and 10 months, because Kevin Mannix at his kitchen table decided that was an appropriate mandatory minimum sentence, when we voted that into law, we forgot that 99, 97.5% of people who go to jail come back to the local communities. We forgot that state law requires them to come back to their home county. Those resources don't follow those people back to their home county. If we want people to have dignity and be part of our community, part of dignity is having a job. Part of dignity is being able to feed your family. Part of dignity is being able to say, "I paid for my mistakes, but today I'm a better person because of it." If we don't believe in second chances, then we are a community that I do not want to live in. I think but for the grace of God, certainly myself, my family members, many people could be incarcerated. It's a luck of the draw, especially if you're African-American, if you're low-income, if you're from communities that investments have not been made in, because those are the people that end up in our criminal justice system. And if you have mental health issues, those are the people that end up in our criminal justice system. So when people come back and are willing to work, because we make them work 40 hours while they're in prison, and they're making slave labor wages while they're in prison, we make that. We make them do that 40 hours a week. But when people want to voluntarily work, we create barriers for people to do that. They're from our communities. So it's not like these are foreign-born aliens that somebody dropped into our community. They came from this community, they should come back to the community, and we should do all weekend to make sure that they can be productive members of our community. And so I appreciate this ordinance coming in front of you. I appreciate your attention today to this, and I hope you will set a standard and a model that says that everyone's entitled to a second chance. And if you show that you're willing to work, that we'll show we're willing to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Next, Carrie?
What's that, ET? My name is Carrie Waters. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the Native American Youth and Family Center here today. I'm also a member of the Clincket Tribe and a Portlander, so, and a former team member of Commissioner Fritz, so it's exciting to be here in this capacity. For the past 500 years, we Indigenous peoples of North America have experienced terrible injustices. We are disproportionately impacted by the criminal justice system at staggering rates. And I know many amazing community leaders and families that have been impacted directly and indirectly by the system, myself included, that have so much to give and should not be unfairly impacted by the stigma associated with this status. Through our engagement on this issue, our community has become very excited and encouraged by this step in the right direction to reverse the injustices of our society. So by your action here, you are affirming your commitment to equity and justice. So I hope that this is eventually extended to the state and housing as well, but even having this conversation is a victory in and of itself. So thank you for your bravery and leadership on this initiative.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Victor Merced, Executive Director of Hacienda CDC. Commissioners, thank you for inviting us to testify on the Ban the Box Initiative. I will say that at Hacienda, we employ 44 staff. We have some ex-offenders on staff. As a matter of fact, I just recently hired someone to my management team that had an extensive criminal history. And one might ask, "Well, why did you hire that person?" And quite frankly, she was the best and continues to be one of the highest-performing employees that, that we have at Hacienda. We have close to 400 units of housing that we have on Killingsworth and Cully, and we have ex-offenders that live in those housing units. We also are opening the, the first Latino Mercado on 72nd and Foster, and there is an ex-offender among some of the micro-mecantes. So we believe in giving people a second opportunity, a second chance, and not having to repay their debt to society over and over and over again. I just want to say one, one little thing about when I was the Housing Director for Governor Kulandowski, to get ex-offender housing funded was one of the most difficult projects we ever had to undertake at the state. As a matter of fact, it took me three years before we actually funded an ex-offender housing project, both in Klamath Falls and in Eugene. And it took an extraordinary lift from myself, from my staff, from the governor himself to intervene because of the nimbyism that was associated with relocating those folks to those projects. So I, I believe that once you've paid your debt to society, you're done and you move forward. So I thank you all for taking this initiative forward. And by the way, there are about half a dozen television cameras outside waiting to talk to you all, and I plan to be one of them because I want to address the issue publicly as well. But I, I think this is a great opportunity for, for you all to social leadership and I'm glad that you're taking this forward. Thank you again. Appreciate the time.
Thanks very much. James?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor Hales and rest of City Council. You know, as I listen to the testimony here, I, I have so many emotions because I come at this at so many levels. You know, I, I'm actually here as a representative of the Coalition of Black Men. I'm also a small business owner. I have a deli on the corner of MLK and Stanton. It's been there for 15 years. I, I had an open invitation to Commissioner Fish to come by. He says he's never been there. But I don't know, 15 years ago, that corner was a cross between prostitution and, and druggies coming from Dawson Park, that intersection, that was really a kind of hole in the wall. And so I started this deli, restaurant, a place where people can come to the internet and, you know, do their laundry. It's really a pretty novel idea. Most of the people that I hire comes from that, that community. And I feel pretty proud of trying to hold down that corner because there really is a stigma about northeast Portland and especially African-Americans and to be able to overcome that stigma, to be able to provide jobs and give people a productive, insightful look at black people doing something productive. You know, I, I hasten to say that the stereotypical view of what black men do and how they do it is, is not a good one. And that's another reason why I started my construction business, you know? You all see my crews out there putting down asphalt and doing work. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a labor of love, trying to introduce the idea that black people can do something positive, constructive. I don't know if people understand that work defines you. And if you don't have a job, if you're not doing anything productive, then it becomes more than a depressing thing for you. It really colors your whole existence. And I was struck by the lady's comment about being a death sentence. I don't know if people understand, when a person can't get a job, it's not only a death sentence for that individual, but it's a death sentence for their entire family. We have grown men living with their mothers who can't feed their children. This is just the minimum that you can do in terms of changing, turning that around. So I, I implore you to continue to make these situations available for people to work who really want to show what they can do in this community. And your leadership is greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We have a few more folks that we asked to come here today, some other folks looking for work, Jill Heisman, Thivu, and Emmanuel Price. Welcome.
Good evening. Go ahead.
Okay. Mayor Hales and Commissioners, my name's Jill Hymanson. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I really appreciate it. I live in southeast Portland. After a series of unfortunate family events, I was married for almost 20 years to a dentist. And when we split his practice, he decided to stop working his practice, so the practice went under, we went through bankruptcy, a foreclosure, and then he, he got remarried and decided to go after my kids. And that's when I made a huge mistake. We were in a long, protracted custody battle, and I made a mistake and landed with two misdemeanor assault charges. That mistake that landed me the three years of probation, which included plenty of taxpayer rehabilitation services, including anger management classes, parenting classes, community services, and so forth. My, my first point I want to make is having to go through these kind of rehabilitative services and then when you're finished with them, being basically discarded by society, it makes it so it's kind of pointless to even go through those services. it so it's kind of pointless to even go through those services to begin with. My second point is that after this incident, well, actually during the incident, I was going to college at Portland State, getting my economics degree, with the goal of being able to earn enough money to take care of myself and my children. Unfortunately, I ended with 70 grand in student loans that I cannot pay off because I've applied, been applying for full-time jobs for the last year and have barely gotten an interview. And when I have gotten an interview, it's been, do I bring this topic up or do I not bring it up? And if I don't, then if, you know, they hire me, it makes it for a very unfortunate, complicated situation. So I admit my mistake. I've taken full responsibility for it, and now I just really am looking forward to having a chance to move on, and this Ban the Box would really make a huge difference for me. I just had a few other points I wanted to bring up with the testimony. Commissioner Salzman, you were wondering how this would work with a small business. So the last job I did have, I was working at McCullough Research. When we went through the interview, it's a very, like, small consulting firm. There's only a few people that work there. During the interview process, he didn't ask about any of this kind of stuff because he's an economist and typically I have an unusual background.
McCullough?
Yes, it is.
We're the reason he has a thriving business.
Well, good. I'll be sure to tell him that next time. But anyway, so the topic never really came up until, you know, several months after being working there, and it was just, this process would give somebody like me a point in the interview process where I can be, because I am not interested in not telling the truth and not being fully disclosing the things that have happened to me, but in the same token, I want to be able to find employment. And so this process gives me a chance to be honest with the employers before they're hired, and so everybody knows we're on the same page. So the second thing, Mr. Fish, you had mentioned about the notices. You have to have employment notices that they post that has, you know, you were saying where employers are, you know, with a...
So I was just, as a former employment lawyer representing plaintiffs, I was just trying to think of an example where in a, when you did not hire someone, you were required to give them a document that set forth all their legal rights. Because what I was looking for was an analogy that we could piggyback off of, because it's not, the forms you're talking about are legally required to be posted, and like the minimum wage and sick leave, those kinds of things. This would be a separate notice, and I'm just trying to figure out where has that, where has that been tried and has it worked?
Okay, I don't actually have it. I was just thinking that they have the employment notices up there that they have.
Yeah, that might actually, that's a good idea. It might be something that is simply posted at the workplace, so that takes care of the notice.
Yeah.
It might even be better than giving a separate notice.
Correct. Okay, that sounds great. The other thing is the two-day notification period, I agree with you that it's too short. I've been in a situation where I've had, given notice, and the next day I have to be in court, and there's very little time to prepare, and it's just, I'm thinking at least five business days would be fair. That's just my humble opinion. And then the final thing I wanted to say is about your, having the administrative process to go through as opposed to having it be a court process, because like you were saying, hiring, I've called around many lawyers, and they all want $5,000 for a contingency fee, which if you're unemployed looking for work, is really out of, it's not going to happen. So with that, thank you for allowing me to speak today, and I truly hope you will support this bill.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Thanks a lot. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Would like to be next. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Tivu. So Mayor Hales, council members, you know, my niece and nephew, they say that I'm the greatest uncle in the world. But today, what I am is that I'm a student of Portland Community College. I'm a full-time employed member of society today. I balance my passion for art and my passion for helping others. It doesn't always work the way I plan, but in the end, most like everyone else, I do my best and I leave the rest up to the power greater than myself. So this wasn't always the case. As in the past, my being able to be gainfully employed was hampered by many things, the most significant one being past felony record and the box that read, "Have you ever been convicted of a felony?" When I was, when I would answer truthfully, I was always denied an interview. When I would lie and get the interview, most times I would get the job. Unfortunately, I always worked hard. I would get promotions and eventually would have to do the background check in order to advance further, and my felonies would be found out and I would be terminated. My employers always said that they regretted having to do this because of policy, but when I asked them if they would have given me the interview, had I answered truthfully, the answer was always no. So when the campaign came for Ban the Box, I saw this as a solution, and not only for myself, but for many others that will come after me searching for a chance to fit back in and participate in society. Banning the box will allow someone such as myself the opportunity to get into an interview and present myself as how I am today, not how I was. It will allow my potential employers the opportunity to weigh my worthiness based on my present self rather than my past self. So what I'm asking you today is to help support Ban the Box campaign. Vote your approval for it, please. Allow men and women like myself a chance to prove ourselves based on our actions today. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. My name is Emmanuel Price. I'm the founder of SCAFE, Second Chance is for Everyone. It's a nonprofit organization I founded about four years ago to help men and women after they transition from prison to society. And I also am a Human Rights Commissioner. I also am a Metropolitan Public Board Member. I'm also an HIV AIDS Awareness Prevention Person, which all the work that they do is inside the prisons. I'm also a convicted felon. I spent four and a half years of my life in organ correctional facilities. I'm born and raised from Portland. After completing my sophomore year in college in Virginia, I came back to Portland, made an idiot mistake with some idiot friends, and ended up going from a full-time student to a full-time prisoner in the correctional facilities. A lot of what we do, SCAFE and just some of the other work I do, is about building relationships with businesses and employers. And for me, it's, I suffer the same things everybody else has suffered as far as looking for employment. Most recently, I'll share this little story. I was hired by one agency to work with pretty much kids in the school district. I'm very transparent about my background. It's on the back of my cards, on my business cards, and instead of letting society hold my background over my head continually where it would cost me a job or an apartment, I decided to take all that pain and anguish and turn it into SCAFE. So I disclosed my background on every application, and with the entity that hired me, they have a contract with someone else to work, you know, in the district. They hired me. I had three interviews. I was kind of questioning whether I would get the job or not, and I eventually got hired. And one month into working with the kids, I was, my background was ran. I never, didn't disclose my criminal history, and I was fired. Or let me stop. This is how it happened. I was hired, fired, hired, fired, and rehired again. I am 37 years old, like everybody else. I have, you know, needs and things of that nature. I have a four-year-old daughter who actually goes to the school where I am working at. And that, for me, was just another blow to continually trying to debunk the myth that folks who have prior criminal convictions are, all those stereotypes that we think of without having to name them. But I know, at that, it's made me a stronger person and a better advocate for people who face the same background as I have. And I really support Ban the Box because oftentimes, people don't even get a chance at all. They fill out the applications. I've interviewed, my mouth is a little dry up here. I've interviewed three and four times for positions, and like a gentleman said earlier, sometimes I'm overly qualified. I've even flipped burgers and pumped gas and bartended, and not that I'm above of that, but that is not what I saw my career as being. So being able to remove that question from applications and then housing applications would really help because it gives people hope, and oftentimes, the people who want to work will work. And not everybody's going to be a perfect, outstanding citizen, but the ones who get out and want to work and reclaim their lives and show people that they can make it and that they're, that they're not a stereotype and that they won't fall into those cracks, I think it's important to showcase that. And since Oregon is always the number-one entity in leading things and doing things, I think it'd be great for you all to support this. And I don't think that all the titles that I have, they don't make me who I am. I would have never thought I would be a Human Rights Commissioner. I would never thought I would sit on the board of the Metropolitan Public Defenders. That was the furthest thing from my mind, but they didn't look at, they didn't look at my background. In fact, they actually were more welcoming of someone like myself who has continually gone through barriers to get to where I am today. And I'm not even at the pinnacle of my success. I always feel like I'm five or six years behind, excuse me, because of time I lost. So overall, like, I really know this would be good for Oregon. Instead of us spending $32,000 a year to house an incarcerated individual, it would be great if we could empower them and employ them, excuse me, to earn their own $32,000 a year, which is about $2,600 a month. Not everybody will have that opportunity, but I guarantee you, once this ordinance is passed, it will boost Oregon's growth, it will build relationships with families, it will make more employees more employerable, and it's just something that I believe in because I'm a victim of not being employed or having to go through so many barriers just to gain employment. And it's the same thing I tell the kids I work with. Let me be an example. Don't make the same mistakes I made, even though I knew better and I was in college and all those good things and homegrown, I still fell through the cracks. And as we heard earlier, the school-to-prison pipeline is real, and if we are not able to get a hold of that and really tackle that right now, we don't want to come back 15 years from now and talk about statistics and percentages by way of the school-to-prison pipeline and then have to do another ordinance to remove an additional box for people who have barriers. So I'm in support of this, and I appreciate the time that you guys are taking to hear this. It's something that is important. It not only affects black folks, it affects white folks, Latinos, it affects everyone, and I support it, and I ask that you guys do the same, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So let's now bring up some folks that have worked to bring this all together. Tom Chamberlain from AFL-CIO, Doug Cooper from Mercy Corps, and Mike Alexander from Good afternoon. Welcome. Would like to be first, Tom? Just push the button there on the base of your microphone, right there. There you go.
You know, it's pretty much been said. The process screens people out who serve their debt to society. I've lived in the city all my life, and I've seen Portland grow from a city that had a lot of prejudice in the '60s to a city today where we consider ourselves to be pretty My Portland's about giving people fair chance and ban the box. The only thing I would add to the conversation is that don't create a policy that's hollow. I don't think that's the course you're going down, but create a policy that really does something. Create a policy that gives people a chance to get in the workplace and turn their lives around. If you're not going to do that, and I don't think that's your intention, you know, don't go through the exercise, but these people deserve a chance. That's all they're asking for. My name's Tom Chamberlain. On behalf of the 300,000 men and women of the Oregon AFL-CIO, we support fair chance.
Thank you. Thanks very much for your leadership on this. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having us this evening. My name is Doug Cooper. I'm with Mercy Corps Northwest, and I'm here because of the work that we do in helping people reenter their community from incarceration. We operate the RTC, the Reentry Transition Center, that sees about 1,000 people a year coming from incarceration back to our neighborhoods. And we also teach classes, have been teaching class for about seven years out at Coffee Creek on entrepreneurship and self-employment to the women there. You know, I would echo what Mr. Chamberlain said, that I can't add very little to the experience that you've already heard. What I'd like to add to the testimony is our experience at the RTC of the great number of people that we work with who've made really serious mistakes in their past, but who are now making good faith and honest efforts to become productive citizens. You know, and their success is really the best-case scenario for everybody. It's the best case for them, for their families, and for the community. This proposal helps create that best-case scenario, so we fully support it, and we hope that it's enacted by the city, and we expect to see it having great positive effect on the people that we work with. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the work you do. Michael, welcome.
Good afternoon to mayor and council. Thank you for having me. I'm Michael Alexander. I'm President and Chief Executive Officer of the Urban League of Portland. Yesterday afternoon around 1:00 PM, I saw a poll conducted by the Portland Business Journal that asked, "Should employers be banned from asking job seekers about criminal backgrounds on job applications?" It's around 1:00 o'clock. 74% felt that the question shouldn't be asked, and that removing the box would broaden the talent pool available to employers and give applicants a chance to explain their past problems. And that gave me tremendous lift and validation because it seemed to be that the general readership of the Business Journal was in agreement with the work that we were doing on this issue. Well, last night, before I left the office at 6:30, I thought I'd check the poll again, and the percentage of support had fallen from 74% to 33%. And the number of people who felt that employers should be free to decide on their own whether or not they screened for criminal backgrounds at any time had gone up to 50%. This morning, it was at 53%. And so it's clear that this is a proposal within our city that does not have universal support. Being able to institute a change of this type has monumental impact to many people in our state and our nation. Across America, 65 million people have criminal histories. That's 20% of the population of this country. 33,000 Oregonians are either incarcerated or under the supervision of the Department of Corrections. And although African-Americans constitute 2% of the state's population, we constitute 11% of those who are under the supervision of the Department of Corrections. The work of the Urban League and numerous other partner organizations is focused on assisting these individuals to reenter communities, families, and workforces successfully because we all know that, as has been stated several times, the best deterrent to recidivism is a job. The bottom line is that all of these individuals, who are committed to redirecting their lives, deserve a second chance and a fair chance. The challenge that we face today is a daunting one, but we're joined by a number of people in our Portland family in support of banning the box and removing this structural barrier to employment. It is with particular appreciation that I acknowledge that the Portland Business Alliance has publicly stated that they are fundamentally in agreement with the goals of banning the box. The league and the alliance both agree that we have an opportunity to create a more equitable path to employment for many in our city. We agree on the principle of moving the inquiry regarding criminal history and the use of background checks further into the interview process. We do, however, find ourselves in a position of what I would call violent agreement when it comes to the issue of when that inquiry can be made for criminal history or background I know that many of the concerns that have been raised by some of our colleagues within the business community are related to the potential legal exposure we heard about earlier or the belief that this policy will be administratively burdensome. But as has been stated, we have the opportunity of looking at the experience of almost 100 cities, states, and municipalities who have enacted various types of Ban the Box legislation to find out what works and what didn't work, not whether we should do it or not do it. Many of our friends and colleagues within the business community prefer a policy that would allow for background checks after an interview has been given but before a conditional offer has been made. And on its face value, that may sound to be a reasonable approach, but we would ask you to consider the following concerns that we have at the league as to why that is not the best approach. One, we know that the EEOC has recognized tying criminal... One, we know that the EEOC has recognized tying criminal histories, background checks, to a conditional offer as a best practice. We also know that many of the corporations within our city currently follow this process. And in looking at creating the recommendations for this ordinance, we look to see what was a best practice within industry, within business, that was currently working. And this is one. Allowing the use of background checks after an interview and before a conditional offer creates a high risk that the decision will be made to eliminate a candidate before the determination has been made. And I have to say that it also gives some sense of confidence to people who are making applications for jobs that background information collected on a group of individuals under consideration will not be kept within the database of an organization so that it comes back to haunt an individual who may apply for a job in the future that they are the best candidate for. But that information is housed within the database of an employer who will use it in future considerations for employment. I know this is a complex situation. And as we work our way through it, I hope that we will keep in mind that honorable people can disagree. Let's also keep in mind that all sectors of this community agree on much more around this issue than we don't agree on. And I hope that if we can stay the course, we can then turn around and begin to address that 55% of the respondents of the survey yesterday who didn't think this was even worth our taking the time to talk about today. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, please?
I have a question for my friend, Tom Chamberlain. Tom, you said you were concerned about the possibility of hollowing this out. And you've been working on this issue for a long time. It runs very deep. Is the concern you have primarily focused on the timing of the background check and preserving a private right of action? Are those the two things that you would consider hollowing out?
Enforcement. Enforcement and when you have that background check. I think you can play around with that background check to really, you know, negate your policy. So I don't think there's a lot of room to play with it.
So the timing's important. And on the enforcement side, the proposal that is before us has both an administrative remedy and a private right of action. Do you have a strong view, based on your experience, as to whether the city did the enforcement mechanism or whether we contracted with the state labor commissioner to do it?
I really can't speak to that.
So what we should do is really...
If it was the NLRB, I think you'd have a strong, you might have a strong view. But we're talking about whether the Bureau of Labor and Industries has the subject matter expertise, the people who know how to do it, that we should contract with rather than creating our own.
The only, what I think's important, whatever side you come down on, whether it's BOLI or a private right of action, that it's real, that it has teeth in it, and it's enforceable.
And let me be clear on that, because you've been very thoughtful on this. I'm thinking, my question's really about the administrative side. And it's, do we want the city attorney to be handling the administrative mechanism? Or do we want to contract with BOLI? I think it's a big question we have to look at. And it will, in part, depend on what our distinguished labor commissioner thinks about whether that's an appropriate role for them to play. But I just want to get your sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
You. Any other questions? Thank you all very much. Now I want to call up some folks whose help we'll need to make this work. And that is Marion Haynes from the Portland Business Alliance. And if she's still here, Heather Hale from Venture Portland. I think we'll go another 20, 30 minutes with, go another 40, 50 minutes with testimony. All right, we'll see how much longer people can stay. Marion, go ahead, please.
Heather left, so you just have me. Marion Haynes with the Portland Business Alliance. I want to thank Michael for his comments. I do think that there is a lot of agreement on this issue. The Alliance was aware that there were groups interested in pursuing this issue as early as last summer. And so we took the steps of pulling a group of our members together, large businesses, small businesses, local businesses, multi-state, and some of whom have banned the box voluntarily on their own employment applications. So we had a wide-ranging view. And I want to be really clear that the Alliance does support removing the box from employment applications. I think Michael gave a little preview of some of the areas where we do think that the details matter and we hope to have more conversations about the timing of criminal background checks. Flexibility is important for employers. Every employer is different. Their hiring practices are different. Their workplaces are different. The requirements of jobs are different. And so having some level of flexibility in the timing of those background checks for different kinds of employers is important. Do we have some that wait until a conditional offer is made? Yes. Do we have others that don't wait until that point? Yes. Do we have some, like the Alliance itself? We don't have applications. We have no box to check and we don't do criminal background checks. We've hired a number of people that do have criminal backgrounds. So every business is different. And that flexibility is something that we want to be mindful of as we're looking to adopt an ordinance to get to this really important goal. Because whatever we do, it should work. And so working for prospective employees and for the employers that will be hiring them is important. The private right of action is also something that gives us some concern. We have reviewed ordinances and statutes and other jurisdictions around the country and have found that the private right of action and waiting until the conditional offer, while they do exist out there in other ordinances, are kind of the outlier. Not as many jurisdictions go that direction. So thank you for the opportunity to comment. This is a really important issue. We support the goal. We support removing the box from the application. And we look forward to some more dialogue about some of the specific details. Thank you.
Marion, you've been very clear. Your organization's been very clear about your values on this, which is you support the movement to ban the box and you support the goals. This hearing is not to do the sausage-making. This hearing is to frame the issue and make sure that we know what people's concerns are. And then we're going to draft something. So let me put the question to you. Do you have a strong feeling, one way or another, about having either the city attorney do an administrative remedy or contracting with BOLI?
We have not taken up that issue specifically, Commissioner. I would offer two thoughts, but I could come back to you in more detail. Cost-effectiveness, I think, will be something that we would want to look at and ensure that we're doing something that is most cost-effective. I would also note that there is some familiarity and existing relationships and interactions with businesses and BOLI. So again, I'll come back with more information. But I think that existing relationship provides some value since they're doing a lot of other employment law oversight.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So Marion, thank you. We will call on you for more feedback as we get further along. So let's take a pause here for a second and let me talk about the process, which is based on this discussion and council's agreement. We're going to ask that the city attorney prepare an ordinance that addresses the issues that Judy laid out at the front end and that we also queue up council discussion of the questions that have been raised today. We also have folks who've signed up to testify. And I know we're going to run out of quorum today. So one option would be to just not take public testimony now and let those folks who are signed up be first on the list when we come back to the ordinance. That's probably our best choice, even though some of you have waited a long time. Because I know we're going to lose a couple of members of the council here in the next 15 minutes, right?
Well, and Mayor, let's be clear. The council is going to draft an ordinance and we are going to come back and debate it. So for people that are here who want to testify to do something, the council is going to do something. The question is the details. And Judy did a wonderful job laying out the framework. Might I suggest that in whatever timeline you establish for getting legislation drafted, one thing we do is just arrange for her to visit each office just to get some feedback from this hearing.
Good.
And then have a chance for us to do our follow-up questions, also based on what we've heard from the testimony. And then perhaps a draft piece of legislation to be posted for comment and then we can come back for a hearing.
Could we see a show of hands for who hasn't yet spoken that was hoping to?
Okay, we've got a dozen or so, maybe. So you want to take 15 minutes and take the folks that we can take and then...
Commissioner, what's your comp? When do you have to leave?
What's your comp?
About 15 minutes.
I have about 15 minutes.
All right, so let's take 15 minutes. Let me, yeah, let me make a couple of suggestions. One, if you can wait, we will make sure that we keep your contact information and sign you up first for the next hearing. But if you would really prefer to testify this evening, we're going to try to give you the chance. So if we call your name, again, if you defer, one, we want to make sure that we have your email address so we can send you a copy of the ordinance when it's drafted, if you'd like that. And two, we'll keep you on the list as someone who can testify first at the next hearing.
Can I just offer one other suggestion, Mayor? We've all been taking copious notes. We've had a full presentation on the issues. Frankly, just from my point of view, having someone say they support doing this and then an issue that maybe we haven't heard about. If there's something that you don't think that we are, has been put before us, that's especially useful right now so we get to have a full record to make the legislation offer.
Good suggestion.
And the other piece, Mayor, I know you mentioned in the State of the City address that you were looking at some tax breaks. So there's, in addition to the requirement that there would be some incentives and that, I'm assuming, will come as part of the budget process?
Yes, it'll come as part of the budget process. But we should at least have those conceptually before us when we act on the ordinance itself.
Great.
Good. Okay, so with that understanding, we'll call the list of folks that are signed up. Again, if you defer, you're not going to just get lost in the system. We'll call you back at the next one.
Why don't, Mayor, I think your practice actually is you get called first at the next hearing.
That's right.
So if you defer, you're first in line for the hearing, which actually is a pretty good deal.
Okay.
I showed 22 people left. The first star, Jamie Partridge, Tanya Dow, and Joanne Harigal. Thank you. That was Joanne? Thanks, Joanne. And let's go with Katie Murphy.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Come on up.
Jeremy Tichnor.
Okay, thank you.
Joe Walsh.
You going to defer, Joe, or you going to justify today? All right, come on up. Jamie, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here representing Portland Jobs with Justice, which is a coalition of 95 organizations, labor unions, community groups, and faith-based organizations for workers' rights. And I'm just, I'll cut through my remarks and basically say that we're here to support fair chance, ban the box. And we're particularly concerned that the criminal justice system is a biased system, disproportionately incarcerates people of color and that this is a race equity issue, banning the box. And we should, it's exciting that you're going forward with this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, Katie Murphy. And I am an advocate and also concerned citizen. And while I appreciate this ordinance and I think it's a start in the right direction, I worked with many people, helping them expunge their records. It's a process. We have one organization here, Clean Street, I think. And I haven't even seen anyone from here, they're here. But it's a process that I had to learn how to do, working with 26 of my clients. And when people come to me with a criminal history and they don't even know how to decipher the information, they don't even know where to get their background check, they don't know how. And then, you know, and some of our partners, the nonprofits also, do not have the resources to help people to get their records expunged. And so, you know, I'm afraid that when we draft this ordinance and it happens, there's going to be a bottleneck. Because just like when people request their credit histories and they get 30 days to dispute it and there's some changes going on now nationally, where that's going to, that's really going to speed up, there's going to be a bottleneck in the process because it's going to take time. It took me time from picking up my client, taking them down to the Metropolitan Public Defender's Office, where I partnered with myself and them to help them, you know, get their records expunged, to help them get at a low cost. And it costs money. It costs $500, $600 to get an attorney. People are poor. And so, you know, this is great. This is a step. But unless we can get it expunged before the unnecessary things that are on there that they don't even know can be expunged when they go in front of that employer and they have that criminal history, it's really, it's going to create a lot of, it's going to take a lot of time.
Ma'am, we hear you loud and clear. I think you meant Project Clean Slate.
Project Clean Slate, right, Jay.
You're absolutely right. If we don't expunge those violations, other things on people's record, not only does it prevent them from getting a job, but it prevents them from renting successfully.
That's right.
So thank you for that comment.
Yeah, I appreciate that. If you would, make sure Josh Alpert, who's sitting behind our council clerk there, has your contact info because we'd like to work with you on that specific issue.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Walsh?
My name is Joe Walsh. I represent Individuals with Justice. We would just echo the AFL-CIO's, if I understood Mr. Chamberlain's position, and not to have you create a paper tiger here that if you just take the box out and then you back up and allow people to do preliminary checks before there's a job offer and those things, that's how you weaken this and you make it a paper tiger. So the, when I first heard about this, I thought it was such a small step. You know, and the everydayness of it. We incarcerate more people than anybody else in the world. So yes, you have a right to be concerned about this because it's a major issue of people coming out, not being able to get a job, and being excluded by a checkmark, for God's sakes. So I congratulate you for taking it up. Please don't make it a paper tiger. Thank you.
Good point. Thank you.
Trudy Cooper. Sonia Young.
Trudy's going to defer. Come on up, Ms. Young.
And go with Shalonda Menefee.
One more?
And Laquida Lanford.
Welcome.
Hi there. Is it okay?
You bet.
Hi, Mayor Hales and Commissioner Fritz Saltzman and Fish. I'm Seongji Young. Currently, I serve as the former Chair of the Human Rights Commission for the City of Portland. I also serve on, excuse me, the Governor's Task Force on Elder Abuse. But today, I'm not here on behalf of either of those organizations. I'm actually a recruiter by day. I work in human resources. And this conversation has actually sparked a lot of volatile conversation amongst human resources professionals. And I thought that I would bring the perspective as a recruiter. The concern that I have is from not only an enforcement perspective, but the education and public outreach perspective. As we've seen with other employment law, there needs to be teeth behind it in order for it to actually work. As an employer, as someone who works for a fairly large employer, unfortunately, there are instances where we've had to work around these types of initiatives because of the type of work that we do. But I think the public outreach and education piece is paramount in making sure that something like this is actually successful. My suggestion and something that I would ask that you all would consider is perhaps instituting an employer advisory board, something that would enable local employers to actually bring forth their concerns about the ordinance before it is actually voted on and passed. I think that's an opportunity to really provide that initial outreach piece that the Portland Business Alliance obviously has really done a great job of providing some level of outreach. But to have an even keeled platform for employers to bring forth their issues and ask those questions to vet them in a very reasonable context, that would be my recommendation and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was what Commissioner Saltzman and I did with Sick Time as you remember. And that was just three meetings. It wasn't like the endless task force. But it was very helpful in crafting an ordinance that we all were able to then support. So I appreciate that suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hales and City Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to testify before you on this important issue. My name is Shalonda Menefee and I'm on the Steering Committee of PFLAG Portland Black Chapter. Chapter. PFLAG Portland Black Chapter provides support, education, advocacy, and resources for black, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgendered, and allied communities. We represent an important and significant part of the city. We support and urge you to pass the ordinance that will remove barriers for countless black LGBTQ people, specifically youth and young adults, and thousands more throughout the city. As we live in a culture of homophobia, social stigma, anti-gay violence, transphobia, ignorance, and unacceptance, which too often push black and brown, gay, and transgendered people into a cycle of homelessness, unemployment, and sometimes leads to crimes of survival. In our groundbreaking 2012 Lift Every Voice report, created in partnership with the Urban League of Portland, it highlights the experiences and disparities impacting black LGBTQ Oregonians. The report quantifies our concerns and what we have known about our LGBTQ community. We are still highly disproportionate. In 2012, there were a startling rate of 18% unemployment in our community and an estimated 42% of homeless LGBT youth of color. In fact, in every highlighted issue area of disparities we face, the numbers are even higher than our straight black or white LGBTQ counterparts. As we have heard, there are countless stories of family members and friends who struggle with landing employment or housing due to their criminal background. And nine times out of 10, if they are on parole or probation, it is requirement that they find stable housing and employment. As we have heard, although they have done their time, are rehabilitated, desperate and willing to be a productive citizen and be responsible, they are often discouraged, embarrassed, and/or ashamed to have to disclose their criminal history, knowing that it can hinder their opportunity to be called for an interview or get approved for housing. Oftentimes, they feel as if they are still being punished for their crime. And for some, this may contribute to the cycle of recidivism. This is an opportunity to change that, to give individuals whom have paid their debt to society a chance to start over and thrive without the criminal history being used against them. We know how important removing barriers are to the members of the black LGBTQ community. It is imperative that we create opportunities and policies that will remove barriers for equal opportunities. Banning the box will allow individuals with criminal history a better chance to be considered a viable candidate without being prejudged by the check in the box. Now it's time to ban the box. We, as PFLAG Portland Black Chapter, urge you to pass this ordinance and show that we matter, that we are part of this community, and that the City of Portland is supportive of and invested in the success of our black LGBT community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Laquida, I think you're going to get the last word for tonight.
Oh, thank you so much, Mayor. Mayor, Commissioners, I thank you guys so much for this opportunity. You know, I usually speak when it's of importance to me and the community. And I became familiar with banned the box last summer when I, you know, I mentioned that I moved back to Portland. And prior to that, I was in Houston, and I was doing some administrative assistant work at a community, at a college, where the students were, half of the students had been incarcerated. I had students coming to me on a daily basis. It was a small barber college, and they were coming to me on a daily basis, you know, expressing that they were very much in need of, like, work. And I pulled together a small group to have this conversation about what it looks like when you're, when you have barriers or when you have a criminal background. So we came up with a, just a little project called Bob. You know, because of my background, we left out the MBO, because of my background, and Bob can be anyone. And so that, you know, in that process, I moved back home to Portland, and I saw a flyer last summer that had conversation about a Fair Chance. And I rushed over to that meeting, which was at Highland Church, and I learned a little bit about banned the box. I also linked up with some folks from the Urban League at that time and wanted to be involved and be a volunteer for whatever canvassing or whatever conversation they were going to have in the community. And we did that last summer, was my first opportunity. We're jumping on the bus with them and doing it in the New Columbia area. So we went door-to-door canvassing, and it was a very difficult conversation to have had with African-Americans in the community that felt like, you know, nobody really heard or cared about what they had been through, and that they weren't going to have a second chance, period. And so with this initiative to continue to keep going, I totally support it. I support second chances. My mom spent 15 years in prison on two terms. And so that's effective to just not only to myself and my whole entire family. So I really would like for this to be something that we can look forward to, as we are unique in Portland, and, you know, we're breaking barriers. So I thank you guys today for this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you all for being here. Again, we want to apologize. Yes, truly. Want to apologize for anyone that wanted to speak today and can't. We are going to lose a quorum. We will make sure we keep you on the list for the first position for when we resume. I'm going to direct my able staff member, Josh Alpert, who's trying to hide but not succeeding, to continue to work with the city attorney's office to develop an ordinance. I'd like to have the council members give us feedback. And again, anyone that wants to stay in touch, make sure we have your email contact as well as having you on the list. Other directions, suggestions?
Mayor, just something for the good of the order.
Sure.
So I just, scheduling. We are scheduled tomorrow evening to do the rate review hearing.
Yes.
I understand, I hope we have a quorum, but every member of council has received the PowerPoint. So you got that today?
Yep.
And any questions or comments before tomorrow night? Mayor, at the exec's meeting, we were told that there would be no vote tomorrow afternoon.
That's right, and I misspoke today on the radio, so...
And just so we're clear, also at exec's, I submitted a memo to the council asking that this need be put over two weeks with a rationale and laid out some issues. So we'll take that up tomorrow.
Okay.
Partly, it's because last week, when I was sick, I just wasn't able to do what I intended to do. And I think a little more time gets us a better result. So I'll make that request tomorrow. What we have is the Uber matter, and then we have everything else. There are a handful of the urban renewal amendments that I think are no longer controversial, but it'll be your call whether you want those disposed of. But we have asked that the matter be set over for two weeks.
Okay, well, we can take up that question tomorrow, because, yeah, we're not going to vote on them tomorrow.
Not voting anyway. But I just want to be clear, everyone knows, we've asked for a two-week set over, and I will not be bringing amendments tomorrow.
Okay, good. Anything else? Well, then again, I'm going to direct that our able assistant city attorney and my staff continue to work to develop an ordinance based on what we've heard here today. Bring it back to council. Are you going to convene an employer group that would suggest it? I think we'll take those, take those suggestions under advisement. We certainly want to hear from the employer community, one way or another. So again, thank you all very much. We're recessed till tomorrow at 2:00 PM.